Okay, I want to call the BMR School District Committee meeting for May 23rd to order. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance? We will move to introduction of members.
Diane Robyn Blackstone.
Erin Bonaco Millville.
Brian Faulkner Millville.
Zach Stenamott Blackstone.
Jennifer Hesel Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein Blackstone.
Mike Buckley Blackstone.
Steve Tringalli Millville.
Phil Chaplin Blackstone.
Kim Shaverhood Superintendent.
Okay, moving forward, we will go to consent agenda A. Warrants to school facilities, field trips, minutes of the last meeting.
Motion to accept consent agenda A.
Motion by Ms. Robyn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buckley. Any discussion? All those in favor, does anybody say an aye?
Aye.
Nay? Unanimous? Moving forward, public forum, if anyone in the galley would like to come, this would be your opportunity to do it. Seeing none, we will move forward. Report of student representatives.
Alright, so, last Friday was the NHS induction. It went really well, and I saw Mr. Tringalli there.
I saw you.
Tomorrow night is the Jazz Night, and it's Mr. Arnold's final concert, so that should be something special. The Joma Hub performance got moved to June 11th and 12th. This morning, the top 10 students were honored by the United Regional Chamber of Commerce at Lake Pearl this morning, so that was good. And, in two weeks is Senior Week, and has the senior banquet and trip and all that. And the senior trip this year is at the High Meadows Resort.
Also with senior stuff, tomorrow is the last day of school for seniors, so we have our parade in the morning, the lunch in the afternoon, and Stuko is, this is the first day they're putting on a pep rally sort of thing. It's nice how we'll be outside doing games, it's up the whole school. If not, inside, there'll be, the Blind Side will be showing, there'll be Minute Twenty Games, and I think dodgeball in the gym. Us this week, we had Mr. BMR, first in your class, which went really well, and there's some funny parts in there. More of the sports side, boys tennis is 11-4 in playoffs, they're starting soon. I, as of right now, I know that we're ranked number five out of our seeding. Girls tennis had a good season. Softball needs one more win to make playoffs. Baseball is doing well, and their last games are coming up. Track also did well, I know this weekend, I'm not sure how many people are competing, but I know of Peter Arcetto is seeded 11th in his race this weekend. Also, I think it was in April, Kevin Grotro was recognized as MIA Athlete of the Month. And, I don't think I missed anything.
Great, questions, comments from the committee?
Who's Mr. BMR?
Oh, it was Luke Holden, he's a junior.
Luke Holden, you mean you seniors let a junior win?
You know, we had, we had some, there was four people in it, there were supposed to be more, but some things had happened where some weren't able to be in it.
I just think for the sake of equity, we should start considering a Ms. BMR as well, in the future. Maybe need to change things up a little bit. Last time Anna gave us her end of the year presentation, so I expect that you have that.
You gave a presentation?
I just have one question. Anna, how many days left?
One.
He said it already, but, been asking her every week we work here, so. Yeah, tennis, so tell us how the boys' first doubles did today.
Demolished, like usual.
There we go.
Or team domination.
That's why he hasn't been here the last six times, because they lost.
Now, Mr. Faulkner, we had some concerns, they had a workshop about, he was slacking. Was it okay, but is it alright that he-
They're okay now. They're okay.
It's a legitimate excuse.
I think that this is the best record you, the tennis teams had?
Yeah, it'll be the best record of all time of BMRs, for boys tennis, so.
Since the game was invented 10 years ago. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck in the playoffs.
Thank you.
Okay, but before you leave, since this will be your last meeting that you come, unless you would like to come back, you're more than welcome at any time. But we just would like you to know how much we appreciate you coming every meeting, sharing information, and we wish you the very best in your future. Where are you going to school, Anna?
Worcester Polytechnic Institute.
Okay.
Going to Worcester State.
Okay, well, we have a little something for you, and we just want you to know that we really do appreciate all that you've done for us, and the insight and the information that you share. It really is a bright spot in our meeting.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
You're both only going to be in Worcester, so you can come down to the meeting next year.
Yeah, you should be able to make it one Thursday a month, right?
We're live on the web.
It has nothing to do with Worcester.
Come to the public forum.
Yeah, do public forum for us.
Come to the public forum, right?
We can update you on college life.
Now, what are you, what are you playing a study, Zach? Do you have a major chosen, or is it-
Yeah, I'm going for nursing with a minor in Spanish.
Oh, very good, yeah, I know they have a very good program there, that's great.
It's gonna be.
I'm going to be going for environmental engineering.
Environmental engineering, that's great.
Wonderful.
Good programs, well, good luck.
Okay, moving forward. We have, we're gonna have them both, or one at a time? Alright, so why don't we have Mr. Cameron join us? Talk about the MS handbook.
Thank you. Okay, so, the first proposed change, and I guess just a preface, this was vetted through the school council, but also shared at the last faculty and staff meeting as well. It's just under in-school suspensions, page eight. This statement is proposed, participation in extracurriculars, school-sponsored activities for the days assigned in in-school suspension will be at the discretion of the staff. Because as of right now, I think the language just is about out-of-school suspensions.
So you're just including both now, it's suspension?
Then we want to include an update under the dress code. We're proposing the following, writing on one's skin with ink is discouraged as it can become a distraction to the learning process and pose a health hazard. It kind of comes out of kids really going crazy writing on themselves this year, trying to discourage that.
Number three probably started in school council maybe in the 2011, 2012 school year, and that is just our push at the middle school level to make things more electronic, and really try to have the families in the middle school commit to the commitment made by the district and Ms. Shaverhood many years ago with the parent portal. And also with the commitment of the new website interface that all the schools have. So, just a couple bullet points, they're more or less guidelines. Check students' daily agendas, this is under parents@www.fwhms.com. Parents' homework for assignments. And then the second bullet point would be stay informed of child's grades and progress by reviewing the parent portal regularly. And just a little history, since spring 2012, so about a year ago, progress reports at the middle school only available on the parent portal, although paper requests for those families requesting paper will be honored, and always has.
How many, how many of those do you get, paper requests, or families that don't have the internet?
We have, and I'm not quite sure if it's, you know, we have asked, but we also want to respect their privacy, if they have the internet or not. I have, and I just did actually last night in the fifth grade parent night, you know, shared that there are government programs for families who cannot afford the internet. If they're on the free and reduced lunch program, if they're on the reduced portion of it, they can have high-speed internet for $10 a month. Comcast charter, they all have to provide it. If they're on the free lunch, they're supposed to get free internet. As long as charter and Comcast follow through, which I have made those phone calls to some families. To answer your question, we have about 27 families in the middle school who currently get paper copies.
I just have one question on the portal, are you checking the hits that you're getting?
We were, last year, last spring, regularly for the sake of, you know, how many hits before we started this and after. And they certainly went up, and so did the requests for, you know, I forgot my password, and, you know, I guess now is the time, since progress reports are only on the portal, to actually sign up, you know, as a mom or a dad. Which, to be very candid, was one of the reasons why we did it.
Can you just talk about that reduced rate or free internet? How would a parent or a family go about doing that, if they find themselves in that situation?
So we have brochures, that's provided by Comcast or Charter in the main office, the middle school main office. There's an 800 number for both cable companies. There's also a national website that's available that has all the cable companies, because by law, they have to participate. I have that archived somewhere as well. But if a middle school family or a parent approaches me, I just grab onto a brochure. And I do share sometimes, because I don't think these, these cable companies, it's not necessarily, I think, a priority for them. You know, to go into a house and install high-speed internet for a family that might only pay $10 a month. So that's where, you know, I've seen it as an opportunity to advocate for them, and I've called Comcast a couple times. Comcast is, has been tremendous, Charter not so much, in terms of their response.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number four, under disciplinary regulations, we had to put in language about the new cameras that will be installed. Security surveillance cameras are installed and may be used for the purpose of increasing safety and reducing liability at the Frederick W. Hartnett Middle School. That's really just to inform people that that would be happening.
Number five, under honor roll requirements, page five, the statement revision is proposed. So, from students must earn a quarterly grade of an average of 80 or above in every class, to revision of students must earn a quarterly, earn a quarterly average of 85 or above in each class. So we're changing, we're looking at changing the requirement and criteria for our honor roll. That also probably started last year as well in the school council, when we blanketed the community and former students and current students with surveys in terms of our honor roll criteria.
So are you following that right now, or you're implementing it for the next school year?
We're proposing an implementation for next school year.
So based on this year's number of honor roll students, how many would that eliminate?
You know, that's a wonderful question, I'm happy to get that answer for you. We just actually had an honor roll breakfast this morning, we're having tomorrow. So I'm happy to get that answer for you. I'm curious, as an educator, you know, if we get a number, say, you know, and of course, I don't know if this would be legal or not, but if, if we implemented this a week before, and all of a sudden 32 students didn't make honor roll, you know, I'm interested as an educator to the cliche of kind of raising the bar. So if the answer is 32 would not have received certificates this morning, I wonder how many of that 32 next year with so much advance warning are actually going to receive it, because the bar's been raised.
Have you looked at maybe just doing different level? Is there high honors, or is it-
There is high honors, yep. There is high honors. This, to give you even further history, 85 was what the middle school started with 10 years ago. And it was brought down to 80, I don't know, Kim, if you recall when. And, again, last year, the school's council focus was on rigor, and whether or not our criteria for honor roll and high honors were, was too easy. That's when all the surveys went out to present parents, past parents, present students, past students, faculty and staff. The results of the survey were mixed, you know, I think, I wouldn't say the majority, you know, because it might have been 60-40, but 60 were, the criteria was fine. Except for one group that was surveyed, and that's the present faculty and staff. They felt the criteria was too easy, and they felt it was time to raise the bar. So we didn't do it immediately in the 2011, 2000 school year. We spent kind of another year as a school council investigating it, and now we're moving to propose it forward.
I would certainly be interested in that number, just, even if you just reference off of today's breakfast.
Sure, absolutely.
In order to make high honors, what is it, 90 averages?
90.
90?
Yep, and that is not being proposed to change at all.
I guess the next two, six and seven, is under the behavioral codes rubric that's in the handbook.
Thank you.
In regards to fighting, I guess what we're adding is that police may be notified if there's a suspension, an out-of-school suspension. And then we're adding a new item to address the encouraging or active bystander in a fight, including those using personal devices to capture video or pictures. The first would be a suspension out of school. The next consequence is minimum of five-day suspension, police may be notified. And then finally, a minimum of 10-day suspension or expulsion, police will be notified.
So how are you, so when you have the encouraging or active bystander, so they're actually doing something to keep the fight going? Is that, am I thinking the right way?
Yeah, we're promoting the fight even before it happens.
Okay, okay.
But you're not asking to step in and break it up?
Of course not, no. You know, I suppose the way in which we promote the breaking up is to go immediately and get an adult or tell an adult.
Okay, any other questions? So I'll be looking for a motion to accept these changes as read for the Hartnett Middle School handbook.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Robyn, second member Greenstein, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, does anybody say an aye?
Aye.
Nay? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good evening. Hopefully you got the edited copy from this morning, to make a few changes here. So I just broke it down into pages. So on page 15, we had the interim progress reports, and it stated that guidance progress reports will be available by parent request through guidance. We're looking to admit this due to the facts that we have a parent portal, we have X2, we have Edmodo, we have several ways to communicate with parents. And we also have teachers in certain departments providing additional progress reports for students that are struggling in the quarter. So guidance was looking to admit that change for guidance progress reports. Second one that we have is page 18, senior exam exemptions. This recently just came up with our finals. What we are looking to do is that, it read that with the permission of the classroom teacher, students would be, or may be exempt, rather than saying may. With permission, I'd like it to state that they will be exempt from taking the final exam. Historically, no faculty member has given a final exam if they, if they reach that criteria of a 90. So rather than saying with the permission, I would like to say just we will. Additionally, there was just some terminology in terms of terms. The third and fourth quarter term, or fourth term, we were changing it to the final two quarters. So that was just terminology there. College visitations, the last two sentences, it read juniors will be granted two such visits in the spring of their junior year, permission must be received from guidance prior to the absence. And all we're looking to do is be a little more specific that, one of which could be a college fair, all of our juniors will go on a college fair, they spend the day in Boston. I believe it's at Boston College, they take the train in, and the college fair is designated specifically for juniors. A lot of our seniors wanted to attend that, so we just wanted to clarify that piece right there.
I think it's at the expo, isn't it, where they all-
I think they moved it, it used to be at BC or BU down there.
I think it's, I think it's on the expo, which is near JFK and that, where they all, or many, most of Boston schools participates.
It's a, it's a great little day for them. Most of them do attend, they need to get permission from guidance. So looking at page 37, central detention cuts. Again, I just wanted to be consistent with the terminology. First offense was one detention added, two detention added, and so on. I changed that to one hour and two hour, and so forth. So that was, rather than calling it a detention, we called it just hours or two hours added. Looking at page 38, I believe that students should be in the classrooms more than they should be in an in-house or out-of-school suspension. So we did look at changing some of the offenses. So looking at personal electronic devices, what we're looking to do is change, or be a little more specific in terms of when cellphones can or cannot be used. We do allow students to use their cellphones during lunch. And there was a question with our faculty is of whether or not they can use their cellphone right after school. It was a little inconsistent in terms of the discipline policy there. Some teachers were writing up students at 2:05 after the bell, when they were trying to make phone calls for, for rides. So I basically just put that in, that at 7:25 when doors open, cellphones should be put away, and that ends at 2:02. So at 2:03, if they want, choose to use their cellphones in the hallways, they may do so without having any sort of consequence for that. I also looked at the consequence in terms of the first offense. First offense was a one-day in-house, the second offense was a three-day in-house and confiscation. Third offense was three days out-of-school suspension. Again, I would prefer to see students in the classroom. So I did change that to, first offense would be two hours rather than the in-house. Second offense would be four hours, and the third would be a three-day in-house. So I am giving a chance for students to correct their behavior, but I'd rather have a two-hour central detention versus a one-day of in-house for their cellphone.
Can I ask about that?
Sure.
Okay. Personal electronic devices, now, when we talk about use of said device.
Yes.
Is this for voice calls, text messaging, internet access?
Yes.
So I guess we're not gonna ever want them to use it like in an educational setting, or-
Okay, well, if they're, if they don't have permission to use their cellphone by a teacher, that would be cellphone use. So if their cellphone rings and they're talking on their phone in the bathroom, they're texting away in the hallway or in the classroom, or if they're on Facebook or any other internet piece without permission from teachers, now, there would be a consequence for that. So specifically, I mean, there are some teachers that do allow cellphones to be used in the classroom, whether it's for stopwatch, whether it's for taking a picture of a diagram or a science project that they did. So they do allow some access with permission from teachers.
So how are you, how are you gonna manage that? I mean, it almost sounds like you have to become the cellphone police to be able to like say, well, you know, he was in Mr. Cameron's class, and he was okay to use the picture, and he's taking a picture out in the hallway, so now he's in violation. I mean, it just seems like, it just seems like that the, the whole approach there is really kind of 1990, to tell you the truth. And I'm just concerned that, you know, you know, if you really want to embrace bringing your own device, or be able, or integrate what they're using, you know, 20, 20, 18 hours of the day, when they're not in, within the confines of BMR. Is that, I just, I just wonder why, you know, it's more thought hasn't gone into, you know, jump-starting that process, or that, that thought process around, okay, how do we control this? Or how do we manage this a little more, a little more proactively rather than punitively? It seems like, you know, that's fine when it was 1989 or 1990, but I, you know, I, you know. I don't know, I don't know how you, I think you'd almost need to have a full-time personnel making sure they're not texting, because at least, if they're anything like my daughters have been, they're pretty, they could, they could do it pretty discreetly.
It's, it's a huge distraction in the classroom. And not that I, I, as a teacher, I do sometimes say, okay, take it out, look this up, and I do that. But, and I've seen it more, I think, this year than I have in the past, where it's not being used for educational purposes. And so it is a problem, it's, it's a huge distraction, and, you know, I've been talking to a lot of teachers that are like, we need a basket at the beginning of class, you know, collect them, because if they were more proactive in using them for educational purposes, that would be fine. That's not what they're doing, and even when you're saying, I shouldn't generalize everybody, but even when you're saying, okay, look this up, and you give them that time, they're checking their, they're texting, they're checking their emails, they're, and you kind of let them have that time. I'm, I'm, I would question, just in between classes, I would think would be okay. The lunch, you said, is okay, and I don't know why, at 2 o'clock, when the bell rings, why it's not okay. So that, that I would question, but with permission of the teacher to do whatever project they're working on in class, I think it's a good idea. But so much of the time, you know, they're not, you're doing something else with them in class, and they're, you know, they're, it's-
But maybe allowing it in between would eliminate that, if you, if they are able to do it in the change of-
Yeah, but how do you control it? You know, you're gonna have kids in the hallway, kids are gonna be texting, doing this, doing that, and then what are you gonna do, send somebody out to corral them all back in to the classroom? I agree, it's a big, it's a big distraction.
When the bell rings, they, they have to be in the classroom, and I usually, I don't usually say anything for the first couple of minutes if I'm doing attendance, and then I'm like, okay, put the devices away. We're not doing that right now.
I mean, it's, it's a difficult, I mean, I think it's very difficult to monitor.
What are the high schools doing? Is there a policy in, in NAMont that forbids use in the classroom?
It's with teacher permission, so it's-
I just think that, I mean, I understand it's the third and fourth offense, but suspension for something that is so 21st century is kind of tough.
I agree, I mean, I, I don't know how much, I haven't looked up all the things where I am, but they, I know after the second or third offense, the parents have to come down and get it, and that usually will solve the problem, you know, if the parent has to drive down. I think I have a bigger concern with locker rooms, pictures in the locker rooms, pictures being taken in classrooms and posted online without other people's permission, with people, I have more, I think, a concern about that than just the general in-between classes and things like that, because there's a lot of that going on, and once it's out there.
I mean, for us, it's, it's been a gradual process in terms of allowing those cellphones to be used in the classroom. But prior to last year, this year, cellphones weren't allowed at all. At some point, I believe for fourth quarter, with the principal's council, they asked of whether or not they could use it in the lunch. And we allowed that to happen and continue this year. I think the major concern with the teachers was how much of them, or how much time would be used or spent policing students of putting their cellphones away as soon as the lunch period ends, and being out in the hallway. And that hasn't been an issue, that hasn't been a problem. I think the fear of in-between, I've, I've seen schools where they would allow students, as soon as they walk out of the classroom, to be able to use a cellphone. But I think the problem there is that, once we let them use their cellphone out in the hallway, how much policing will have to happen as soon as they walk into the classroom, where hopefully there is some sort of structure happening, where they're sitting down, taking out whatever they need to, and preparing for that, for that lesson. I think that's a fear with some of the faculty. I mean, in terms of, you know, BYOD, I agree that, you know, we need to look at that and have students be able to utilize whatever they have. And right now, it's smartphones, or, you know, that iPhone. Question is, how do we enforce that and create a internet policy where students are essentially regulating themselves in terms of what they're, what they're doing on there? Right now, I mean, there are a lot of teachers that feel comfortable enough to be able to allow students to be able to use their cellphone in class. Some aren't, some choose not to allow them to have their, their cellphone out. So it's, it's really a philosophical decision on, on the faculty- So it's, it's really a philosophical decision on, on those, on the faculty of whether or not they feel like they can police that. Or if they can't. I mean, I, I, I have a few concerns again with taking pictures of, of teachers or students in class or even videos. I think if you go to YouTube right now and click on, you know, teachers in the classroom, you'll see that there are videos. Of teachers at the da- at their board, trying to put something on the board. And they're, they're trying to be a distraction and cause something, I mean, it's, it's pretty scary to see what's out there. So I think the way that I'm looking at this is I'd like to gradually explore it and see what would happen. It seems in the high school that it isn't a, a huge issue once a cellphone does get confiscated and a teacher or parent has to come in. And that's where that second piece would be, that second offense. But for me, you know, when I looked at this the first time, a first offense of using your cellphone, which I think most students will do. It's whether or not they get caught or not, is a one-day in-house and to me that, that seemed a little harsh. But once they get through that one day, they, they typically don't do it again. And if they do, that second time, it's confiscated and a parent needs to come in. And speaking with Mr. Ducharme, he's mentioned to me that some cellphones have been in his office for two or three weeks. And parents are saying, you know what, keep this, keep the cellphone. Holding on to cellphones in a class for me as a teacher, I don't wanna put myself in terms of being liable. In terms of, if someone else takes another cellphone, that's a three hundred dollar phone. If I give the cellphone to another person, I would feel responsible and I don't have three hundred dollars to give to a, to a student. Who had their cellphone accidentally taken from someone else. So there's, there's a lot to discuss there in, in terms of where we should go with the personal devices. But I'm looking from a, from a discipline standpoint, I, I wanted to lessen that. In hopes that the use or frequent use of cellphones inappropriate, inappropriately in the classroom will stay at where it is now. My fear is, well, you know, a student will say, oh, it's only two hours versus it's a one-day in-house. I'm hoping that they say that they don't want the two-hour central. But for me, I'd love to keep them in the classroom as much as possible. You know, if it was disrespect, if it's a fight, if there's something that's a little more than a cellphone issue or concern. Then I could, and then I could see why it's an in-house or an out-of-school suspension. But for a cellphone policy for the first time, to me, I think, should be a, a slap on the wrist and, and not a, an in-house suspension. So that's why I, I looked at changing that from that standpoint.
But before we get off of that. I think what really needs to be done instead of trying to, trying to legislate this into the bad behavior. Is that what needs to happen at the high school level and probably at the middle school level and you're here, I'm glad you're here, Mr. Cameron. Is some type of education seminar, whatever, what is the expectations? You're bringing this device in here, you know, this is what's expected of you and this is the, and here's what happens to the violation. You know, I don't think we should be punitive over these devices if we're, if we're, uh, one side we're gonna support people bringing stuff in. Whether it's a laptop or whatever, laptops have cameras, tablets have cameras. But I think it's what the acceptable use is. And say, okay, this is your buy-in and this is a privilege. It's very simple to shut it all off. I mean, there's probably fairly poor cell reception in most of these buildings for the most part. And the wireless can be shut off or the wireless password can be changed to, to shut it off on them. You know, that's fairly, that's fairly straightforward, it can be done, you know, can be done from a management console and so forth. But I, I would like to see the other way around, is it, okay, you're bringing this device in and, and part of this device is not only the texting. But it's also, you know, an internet application or an application that can help you do research or look something up. And I would hope that, this is twenty thirteen, that the staff is embracing that sort of approach. At least I would hope so in this, uh, this day and age when, uh, you know. Most children, I think, in probably in both towns, probably greater than sixty percent have access to some type of tablet or laptop device.
Well, I, I agree and I think we need to educate them. If, if we just cut them off and not educate them, what's gonna happen is they're gonna go out into the world and get a job. And be using their cellphone in the middle of their workday and that's gonna be a problem for them. We need to talk about the responsible use and how to use it professionally and when's, you know, an appropriate time and when's not an appropriate time.
How do you, how are you a, a, a good net citizen or a good citizen of the world?
Digital citizenship, digital citizenship is the term. And so I know when I went, what was the one, Pat Larkin?
Yes.
For the iPads, Burlington. They actually had some really great student videos on what digital citizenship was. It was really, they, we kinda watched that and it was really awesome. But I think if we don't, we do have a responsibility to teach them appropriate use. And give them the consequences when they're not using the appropriate use. But it, it's true, it's, you know, if they're using their agenda, if they're having an agenda on their phone, that's an appropriate use. It's hard to tell whether they're doing that or not, but, you know. But certainly I think the consequences that you've, you've changed are much more appropriate than what they were.
I would love to explore the, the digital citizenship piece as well. And probably update our internet policy to, to go along with something similar to that.
There's a great website, commonsensemedia.org that has already written curriculums on digital citizenship. For middle school, high school, elementary school.
They've got video clips.
We use it a lot, I, I use it a lot at the middle school.
Dress code policy, second and third offense again was an in-house, three days in-house. And I changed it to second, third of two hours, four hours, four or more would be an in-house suspension. And rather than being a dress code issue would be an issue with insubordination. Giving them four warnings, or three warnings before an in-house happened, I think is, is appropriate. We don't have a whole lot of issues with, with the dress code. I think when, when the, when it's getting a little warmer now, this is when we're, we're gonna see that there are some concerns. But I, I think having a two hour, two hours and a four hour, I think is, is a little better. I think the first offense is just a general warning and they can correct whatever dress code issue they have. Whether they, they got a sweatshirt from the school store or they call home and, and get something that's appropriate for the first time. Page thirty-nine, insubordination. Again, it's just two versus, or the two detentions, four detentions, I just changed that again to be consistent with two hours and four hours. And finally, public displays of affection. A lot of this is, is coming from an administrative standpoint. It's just, it's very difficult for some faculty to, well, they're, they're not doing it in the classroom, most likely. It, it is happening in the hallways while they're going down to lunch. But again, I wanted to be consistent and it read, the second offense was an hour of central. Third offense was a one-day in-house and to be consistent with our dress code policy and electronic device. I, I just, I changed it to two hours central, four hours central. And then the fourth or more would be an in-house suspension for insubordination. And going along with bullet seven. It said the police department would, will be notified of all student suspensions rather than saying that they will be notified. We wanted to be a little more specific and say that it's at the discretion of the administration of whether or not they'd be notified. We're not notifying if it's a dress code issue for the fourth time. So that's why we wanted to clarify at the discretion of administration. And most likely those would be for physical altercations or something that would happen in an assembly. And that is the proposed changes for the handbook.
Okay, any further discussion or questions?
Just have one on the, on that last one, was there any feedback from the police on this change?
I'm not certain. On that. I'll be honest, I, I'm not sure whether or not the, the faculty, that was a, a change proposed by several faculty members. And Mr. Ducharme on that one. And I, I'm not exactly sure if the police department had any say in that.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the fact that they don't have to be notified for everything, but I'd be more concerned with the fact that, you know. We'll just say it's arbitrary and, well, you know, the kid had something that may be construed as a viol- an act of violence. Or, or something like that and we just kinda say, well, we don't have to notify the cops. So I just, I think I'd like to see some more detail about which ones get notified and which ones don't. Just to protect our own self so that, well, you know, this kid's been suspended four times and then he came in with the machete. You know, and I thought that would ever happen in Blackstone or Millville, but I think that that would be, that would probably be a wise choice. And I'm sure that the public safety officials would, would probably wanna err on at least on, on that, on that side.
I think they should be part of the conversation too about what, what, what they wanna hear about. Even if it's not a formal complaint, there might be some incidences that we're seeing escalation. And give them a heads up of the escalation before it becomes, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but.
We do.
But maybe, yeah, and I agree, I think a little more detail on which, what's going, what's not, which offense.
And I think we, we just need to be specific enough. I think, you know, when we do notify the police department, it is for, if I'm looking at this year, if there was a physical altercation. If there was a threat towards someone, harassment. There was an assembly, a distraction in the assembly, so we did notify the police department. Those were ones that we did, we, we, we didn't call for if it was the fifth or sixth time that someone was tardy to school. So I, I, I agree, I, I'll have to be a little more specific in terms of that and ask for feedback from the police department in terms of what they feel. We should call them on.
I also think, they shouldn't always, sorry, they shouldn't always be there because, and they shouldn't be called just when there's a problem. Certainly, I mean, we don't, we got some good kids in, in the school. But just to proactive and have the kids see the police on occasion in a positive light and not just. And I know they do it probably with the, um, the mock accident and stuff like that. But, you know, more of that, I don't, I can't see being a bad thing.
Just to follow up, um, do we track any of this, like say if we have a child with some, okay, maybe it starts out tardy. And then, you know, do we, do we track that like over like say the hundred and eighty days and say, well, you know, in the first term he was, or he or she was a, a problem. With attendance or whatever and then, you know, it kinda graduated into something more, um, more severe or, or, you know.
The trend would be?
The trend, yeah, do we, do we do any analysis on the trend, like do we, can we spot like, um, you know, trends to say? Geez, it really looks like, you know, the child A, B, and C seem to be kinda headed down this wrong track and.
We, we definitely have a list of, of students that we do track. We have monthly meetings with, with our guidance counselors, with, with Keith, myself to, to examine. I mean, we look at absence, absences, we look at tardies, we look at several things that are happening in terms of discipline. So we're looking for that consistent, consistent pattern, so we do meet frequently.
And does that tie into the score, is that the score?
Yeah, it does tie into that, but we also meet just in, in general.
Do we have any presence from the law enforcement on that or?
Oh, absolutely.
The chief is there from Blackstone and we did have Millville as well.
How about the DA, nothing from the DA?
No, we haven't had that kind of buy-in this year at all. And it's been, though it has been very helpful to have the chiefs.
I'd like to see that, you know, potentially, maybe we can talk to the state senator or the state rep to say, hey. You know, this program still exists, is there any staff that's available out of the expert court that, you know, maybe they don't have to come to every time. But if they came like once a quarter or something, it's to involve themselves in it. Okay, thank you.
So without any more discussion, I'd like to get a motion with the exception of the last, um, the police department paragraph. A motion to accept the changes. Motion by Mrs. Robin?
Second.
Second, Ms. Robin, aye. Any other discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, is gonna be saying aye?
Aye.
Nay? Unanimous. So you'll just present the, that last paragraph again, once you get some more details, Mike.
Great, have a great night.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving forward with subcommittee reports, strategic planning.
I'll let Brian talk about it.
Gonna give this out to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so this is our proposed, um, our core standards that we've been working on for quite a while now. And wanted to present it to the committee for review and discussion next meeting. Give you time to digest it a little bit. And at the next meeting, we hope to have some of the people help us put this together, so you recognize them. And if there's any question about any of the intent of any of these standards and how we wanna use them going forward, so. Thank you to Mrs. Robin for all the work that she's done on this. It's been a long, long process to get to this point, but I think we're, you know, we've got a good document to work with. It's gonna be a living document that will continue to grow and change as the ongoing strategic planning committee. Will see the need to, to update it and make modifications to it, so.
A big thank you to the administrators and Mrs. Shaverhood. They really came out in, in an awful lot of meetings with us as we went through it. After the committee goes through and, you know, whatever changes still need to be made. We anticipate the administrators getting it and through the summer, coming up with action plans. On how, and then coming back after that to, to tell us how they plan to meet the goals, so.
Great. The rest of the subcommittee reports, I kinda reshuffled in terms of what we discussed last time. I haven't put anyone's names next to these yet, I'm still, you know, kinda figuring that out. In terms of the policy review, my thought is we just kinda, each of us take a few policies and, and review it and come back and share. But we'll get to that after we get through the, um, the budget and whatever else. The regional agreement, I, I believe it's still Erin Wendy and Kathy. I think that and the C and E are gonna be the big tickets for moving forward in the next year. Facilities, if, if you're interested in one of these or not, you know, just let me know and I'll, I'll have this all sorted out by our next meeting. Questions?
As far as the regional agreement, now that, you know, it's very clear that we do not need to close AFM. And, or shift any kids, I'd like to gather the group of parents that did answer our survey. That are interested in participating on a subcommittee. So I'd like to, you know, start, I have them all in a file here and, you know, we could schedule our first meeting.
That'd be great.
To look forward to next.
Are there any in terms of, is it just parents at this point?
Oh, no, parents, staff. No, there's parents, staff members, all stakeholders are involved in this.
Stakeholders in terms of major community people, so if they are, that's great, if not, if we have to go recruit some.
Well, we had two, I believe we had two questionnaires that went home, one was to, I mean, that went out, one was to the staff and I believe one was to the parents. So those are the ones that we have, but we are developing a, the sub, the subcommittee is going to consist of all stakeholders that wanna be involved.
Okay. Okay, great, anything else, Erin? Moving forward, report of the superintendent.
MSBA update, we're reviewing the contracts. We anticipate that we will be bringing them forward for signature and your approval in the next several weeks. When that happens, what that means is we will move forward and again, developing the plans for the JFK AFM complex. The roof repair, we've not heard anything back from the senate as far as where the bill is concerning Millville and the high school. Once we have the money in-house, which will be next week, we anticipate receiving the money on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth. That's when we will initiate the second. That's when we will initiate the second phase. So once that happens, we're good to go and we will move that forward. I've not heard from, about the MSBA report that I submitted for Millville. I understand that it takes about three weeks or so. So I do anticipate hearing in the next several, actually in the next week or so. So I hope that's good news.
And was that the first phase, Kim? That was the SRO or whatever?
Yes, and at Millville?
Yeah.
Yes, the SRO, and then they took it in and they made the site visit. And what I understand, and Greeney did a fabulous job making sure that he shared our concerns with the visitors, and they certainly did agree that there were some significant concerns. Now, with that being said, I'm not holding my breath, but it does sound much more positive if they would have just said, oh, yeah, and then walked out. But they didn't. They spent a long time there and they certainly, um, we made sure they saw our significant concerns. So we're hoping that we will be launching into a third or fourth project.
And we are, is it still JFK and AFM shortly after school is, is completed?
Yes. In fact, that's really why, once we have money in-house, which will happen next week, that's when we'll go back out to the project manager and the architect and say, let's go. Now we need some very specific time. And we want to know when they think we'll have our, they call it, I guess, feet on the roof, which means I guess they're actually up there working. That's the date we need to know.
All right, moving forward, public forum, second public forum. If anyone would like to come forward.
In the back row.
Seeing none, uh, we will go to committee forum.
I guess just a congratulation to the seniors that are going to be going out. We probably won't have another meeting before they're no longer under our roof. So congratulations and hopefully they will, um, be successful in whatever path they choose in life.
Same thing, congratulations to all of our graduates. I think we need to change our meeting for our next scheduled meeting. And I was actually just trying to find, we never actually voted on, um, next year's schedule.
We held it.
We held it. Doesn't that have to come up at this?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to defer to the next time. So I have some suggestions, so.
I think we just need to make sure. I was just trying to find it and I don't have it. I have the paper copy, copy. We need to make sure we're opposite weeks of the end of the year festivities, I think.
For next year.
For next.
Yeah, for next year.
Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, Brian?
Nothing.
On to you, Mr. Tringali.
I was able to attend the NHS inductions last week with Kim. And that was my first experience with that. And just congratulations to all the students that made it. They've worked really hard and, uh, it's just such an impressive group. I mean, it truly is. I mean, from the people that were speaking, I mean, it was 100% student-run and it couldn't have been run any better. It was just so dignified and the kids are fantastic. They really were. And you can tell, kids in that room are really going places, you know. They don't, they don't need us. They're, they're doing great without us. But, um, and also the Millville Town Meeting was, um, last week. And I'd like to thank the few parents that did attend. Hopefully we get better attendance in the future.
Okay. And I have, I'm just, I'll share in the sentiment of sending off the seniors. It'll be a busy, uh, week next week. And I think we have some retirees coming, um, the next time we meet. And I think the proposed date for our next meeting, instead of the sixth, because that conflicts with awards night, uh, we would just do the following Thursday, the 13th. Is that okay with everybody?
Works for me.
It conflicts with something.
Can I just add?
Nothing with the seniors, though.
Can I, just one other thing I just thought about is, uh, the Blackstone Town Meeting is Tuesday night at the Regional High School Auditorium, the Morley Sullivan Auditorium. I believe it's 7:30, the annual, probably seven o'clock is the special. I urge you all to come out and attend, um, uh, the annual town meeting when the actual vote for the budget will, uh, will be conducted.
Good point. And at that time, we'll have the retirees come in, so that, that, an ending for them as well and celebrate.
Yeah, I'm this guy. We'll have cake too.
We'll have cake too. Okay, so now we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm sorry, yes, you're right, Brian. Last night when we were doing strategic planning, the retiree party is the 13th.
Well, it'd be kind of hard to give them books if they're all at a party.
I don't know if it's for all of the retirees, but at least one of the schools is doing.
Meet the 20th and just do one meeting in June?
Uh, that would be an option. What about, what about the 12th, that Wednesday, the 12th?
I was going to say, does it have to be, it could be Wednesday.
I think the 20th would be great.
If, if people feel that we can get through everything on the 20th, I think that's fine.
It depends. If we have this many people, how are we going to get through public forum?
It's true.
It's going to be hard. It's going to be hard.
Well, take delay maybe.
Listen, you tell me to giddy up and I giddy up and like. Brian didn't know we were having a little workshop though, so he's like, oh, what?
I didn't see it posted.
So are we in agreement for June 20th then?
Yes.
Giddy up. Do we need a motion vote? Are we good?
Second vote, yes.
No, I, yeah, I think, you know, we'll see each other before then.
Yeah. How about do we change the June meetings to, from the 6th and 27th to the 20th?
Motion by Mr. Buckley, second by.
I'll second that, thank you.
Mr. Tringali, uh, all those in favor, is going to be saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Seconded.